All right, let's call to order the Hudson Community School District 158 regular meeting on Thursday, April 17, 2025 at 5:59 p.m. Can I have a vote?
Mrs. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Bittman?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Minden Wiley?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Craddy?
Here.
All right, everyone's here, so we'll move on to, I'll make a motion to move into closed session at 6 p.m., as indicated by the agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Quagliano. I know we've rolled public.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Bittman?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
All right, we'll be out there.
All right, no action from public session. But we have resumed the motion to resume in public session for the regular agenda on Thursday, April 17th at 7:05 PM. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Cretti?
Here.
Mr. Bibby?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Quagmireano?
Here.
Mrs. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mrs. Weller?
Here. All right, with that, now, I will say there's no action from public session. There's no three points won. We'll move to number four, the pledge of allegiance. So, we high five them.
While we're super excited, we've got some awesome students here tonight. These are our Hotly High Five winners. They're gonna come up and introduce themselves briefly to you, and then Ms. Lommer will be their nomination.
My name is Peyton. And Peyton, here's what your nomination said. Peyton meets our expectations of being respectful, responsible, involved in things, coming to school each day as her best self. Always with a smile and spreading joy throughout her heartfelt hugs. Peyton has grown into a role model, encouraging her classmates to do their best, supporting them by sharing her ideas. Anyone who gets to spend time with Peyton will quickly see that she is a super learner, an outstanding citizen, and a wonderful friend. Congratulations.
My name is Tyler Kepin, and I am in Conley Elementary School.
And Tyler, here is what your nominee here had to say. Tyler is receiving the Hotly High Five award because of his exceptional kindness, empathy, and respect towards both friends and teachers. He consistently demonstrates a compassionate and thoughtful attitude, always taking time to understand others' feelings and offer support when needed. With his contagious smile, magnetic personality, and can-do attitude, Tyler continues to work hard, day in and day out, as a calm energy, and a kind heart, and a generous spirit that makes him a wonderful friend to all. Congratulations.
My name's Addie Monson, and my school is McHaven Elementary.
And Addie, switch over right there, and I'm gonna read what your teacher said about you. Addie is a model student. She is cheerful and well-behaved and listens carefully and follows directions. She is responsible and capable in the classroom and always helps her teachers and her classmates. Whether it's cleaning up, helping a friend, sharing materials, or passing out papers, or even walking a friend to the nurse's office, office, or library, I can count on Addie to do her best. She is a kind, calm partner to students who might be overexcited or having a hard time. I love having Addie in my class. She's well-deserving of the Hotly High Five. Congratulations.
My name is Erin Vasquez. I'm from Hannah Martin Elementary.
And Erin, here was your nomination. Erin's classmates describe him as a great role model with a consistently positive attitude, who always demonstrates patience and calmness in every situation. He's eager to learn, shows genuine kindness to others, and never hesitates to help his classmates. He leads by example, treating others with respect and showing what it means to be respectful, responsible, involved in our school community. Way to go, Erin. We are so proud of you.
Hi, I'm Olivia, and I'm from Marlowe Middle School.
All right, Olivia, you were nominated, and here was what your nomination said. Olivia is a positive, hard-working, respectful student. She always tries her best, even when learning gets difficult. She is resilient, never giving up, and always seeking to better herself. She's a true example of what the growth mindset should look like. Additionally, Olivia is always kind to her peers and is a leader in groups, always choosing to do the right thing, and is mature beyond her years. Congratulations.
My name is Natalie Adam, and I'm a freshman at Hotly High School.
Natalie is a shining star. She is heavily involved in the theater program, respectful and responsible in class, and dedicated to her schoolwork. Natalie exemplifies the radar way by constantly demonstrating respect, responsibility, and involvement in the practically the way classroom. She fosters a positive learning environment, stays engaged with challenging STEM concepts, and actively participates in discussions and projects. Always prepared and efficient with her time, she is a top-performing student who works hard daily while showing kindness and appreciation for her teachers and her peers. Congratulations. All right, so in just a minute, we're gonna have you guys come on up here. We have a certificate, and we'd like to shake everybody's hand for all the great things you're doing. And while you're doing that, I would like to thank your parents for raising such great individuals, and we are so excited that they share you with us each and every day.
So, as we take the pictures, parents, don't be bashful. You can come on up in close.
You can come on up in close.
Denise gets the best shot. Denise gets the best shot. That's the way this works. That's the way this works.
All right, now, we will move to number five. To your recognition, we have young authors.
Should we go to photo mode?
Yes, I'll just do a quick little thing. I would just wait. Just a second. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Should we go to photo mode? I think, are you gonna have them all all the way up here?
Yes, I'll just do a quick little thing. I would just wait. Hi, my name is Michelle Busky, and I'm the three-five coordinator. We have Kristy Gibbs, she's the K-2 Young Authors Coordinator, and then Tammy Carpenter is the six-eight coordinator. This year, we had over 350 young authors' books that were submitted, and they were so difficult for our judges. They did, these wonderful children did such a great job, working not only on their stories, but also on their illustrations. And so, we are gonna announce their names and the title of their book, and also their teacher. Before we do that, I just wanna thank all of the parents for supporting all of you, also Eileen De La Hante for helping to organize our coordinators. We did have 16 judges who also worked really hard, and they debated on all parts of your book. So, awesome job. Thank you so much. So, Kristy, I'll let you start.
All right, we're gonna start with Cheswick Kindergarten. We have Mackenzie Eamon, who wrote Candy World, and she is in Mrs. Williams' class. And then, in first grade at Cheswick, we have Caleb Geese, who wrote Teddy the T-Rex Loved Football, in Miss Epley's class. In second grade at Cheswick, we have Emma Castian, who wrote The Power of Yet, in Mrs. Hill's class. And moving on to McHaven Kindergarten, we have Day Boza, who wrote Choosing to be Day by Mrs. Benson. In first grade at McHaven, we have Daniella Grandolfo, who wrote The Lost Kids in the Scary Forest, from Miss Goldstein's class. In second grade at McHaven, we have Stella Sovalgio, who wrote How I Got to a Great School, from Mrs. Camisia. And moving on to Leggie Kindergarten, we have Georgia Caldera, who wrote A Kitty Walking on the Road, in Mrs. Calasie's class. In first grade at Leggie, Kendall Thompson, Always Someone There for Me, in Mrs. Bickert's class. And last, for K-2 at Leggie Second Grade, we have Nathan Caldera, who wrote The Buzzer Beater, from Mrs. McGregor's class. So, give them a round of applause.
Okay, our three-five winners from Martin, Nicholas Castillo, The Origin of Jerry, in Mrs. Soling's class. Fourth grade, Juliana Gale, Escape to the Museum by Mrs. McBean, or Mrs. McBean's class, not by Mrs. McBean, sorry, Mrs. McBean's class. Fifth grade, Vanessa Kamner, Planting Ideas, in Mrs. Bushy's class. At Conley, Leila Pendino, Pencil Versus Pen, in Miss Heisler's class. Jasmine Palos, Lucy, in Miss Pipitone's class. Nicholas Farrell, The Adventures of Bob and Joe, in Mrs. Galishow's class. And at Leggie, Kesia Patrick, The Sea Monster, in Miss Garza's class. And fourth grade, C.C. Calabrese, Ghosts Are Real, in Mrs. Marchand's class. And fifth grade, Kathy Ford, A Fight for Your Life, in Miss Bessie's class. Awesome job. Let's give them a round. Our middle school winners. At Marlowe Middle School, we have Susanna Kuna. Her book was The Secrets of the Forest, and she's in Mrs. Radcliff's class. At Heineman, we have J.D. Gallagher.
Yeah. 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 Yeah, I know. Point five. All right, I think I have to get back here a little bit. There we go. All right. When it's got purple part around it, and then it's. All right, buddy. Ready? Can you get that? Yeah. All right. Now, how was it? Congratulations. 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 Yeah. 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 Thank you. Have a good night. Good night. Thank you. Yeah. 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 Thank you. 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 Thank you.[1145.12]
Good evening. I bring comments tonight from former board member Kim Skajel for Tony. She says, "I am not able to attend tonight's meeting, but I didn't want to miss the opportunity to say thank you to outcoring board member Tony Quagliano. Many people are not aware of the extent of the contributions Tony has made to the school district over the past 20-plus years. He started by volunteering his time with the finance committee prior to joining the Board of Education. He gave countless hours working through the problems of those days. The board passed a referendum to staff the four buildings that opened in 2005. Unaware that the wording of the referendum could potentially authorize far more of a financial burden than voters were led to believe, it was Tony who discovered this problem, and it was he who traveled to Springfield on numerous occasions, working with other board members and our state legislators to fix the loophole in the tax cap legislation. This effort saved taxpayers of District 158 and those of many other districts across the state many thousands of dollars. Tony's work helped turn around the district's financial future. We went from a district that needed to issue tax anticipation warrants in order to meet payroll to the financial stability we witness today. It was Tony who led the board through the dark days of the only teacher's strike in the history of District 158. Tony has always been a strong advocate for supporting staff members, often encouraging board members to do more and reach further, but always within the confines of the budget. Tony is unfailingly polite, even when those around him seem unworthy of his kindness. I served with 28 different board members during my 22 years of service as a board member. Many of those 28 were exceptional, going back as far as the 1990s with Jim Hebe and Jim Craybill, whose vision included school campus settings with buildings named after local educators. Mike Scala, Kevin Gentry, Sean Green, Don Drizell, and Paul Troy are also notable for bringing the district through troubling times and helping create the Destination Schools District that we all enjoy. By far, though, Tony Quagliano has been the best board member I have ever served with. His work has had a profound influence that will improve the educational outcomes for generations to come. Thank you, Tony. You are appreciated. Enjoy your much deserved retirement from board service. Kim Skajel. I also have comments to share from the Troy family. Most people in the area cannot recall when Tony was not on the Board of Education of District 158. What I recall is that when Tony arrived, he began to teach us all about school financing, a complicated conundrum in Illinois, in the snow-filled years of the early 2000s. Tony came to understand and then taught the community about TIPS, impact fees, debt management, categoricals, and everyone's favorite, the unfunded mandate. To this point, I have never heard a school board member speak so confidently about school funding in a role that he was volunteering for. Tony was then and has always been a person to listen to. Behind Tony is his fabulous support team, his treasured family. Carol, who is here tonight, has been incredibly patient as you have served as a member of the school board. From the regular monthly meetings of Enthusiast Schools that you would attend, the Citizen Financial Advisory Committee meetings, of which you were a founding member, strategic planning focus groups and meetings, the late-night and frequent contract negotiation meetings, graduation ceremonies, the Triple I Conference, all these events have taken time away from your family. Carol, Joe, Jason, and Kyle note firsthand the sacrifices that you have made, but they made sacrifices too as you served in this role. Dad wasn't home as often as they might have liked, but they knew that you were helping to make our community stronger. Tonight, we thank your family as well for sharing you with all of us. So, Tony, these flowers are not for you.
They shouldn't be.
They're for Carol. From one board spouse to another, thank you, Carol. Really, thank you. And to your boys for sharing Tony with us. Our school district is stronger because he has been faithfully in this room, out in our schools, and serving in our community for nearly 20 years. Congratulations, Tony, on an exceptional run serving our school district.
Thank you, Jennifer.
All right, Dr. Rowe.
I actually served as maybe the lead negotiator with Tony the last three elections to convince him to not step away, and I'm sure must have Carol's chagrin. But I just wanted to, I'm not going to repeat the same things that Jennifer said, but to echo some of that. What Tony really ushered this district through was the explosion in population and the transition from a rural community to a more suburban community. Having the pleasure of working with him for 13 of those 19 years and being a part of that at the building level and then at this level, there aren't too many districts that can navigate that kind of growth as eloquently as this district has. And even though the financial struggles in the 2003-2006 window of time that were great, his impact was tremendous. From in District 158 to the impact in Springfield, you've been a tremendous leader, Tony. And in the room that most of the public never gets to see, you're the collaborator, you're the one who reaches across whenever there needs to be a compromise. You've been a tremendous leader, and I've learned so much from you. Most importantly, leaving the emotions of your decisions on the side, because when tough times call, we need logic, realistic options, and compromise across the room. So, I appreciate you as a 20-year resident, I just calculated that today, 20-year resident of the community, and still very proud to send my kids to District 158. You played a huge role in that, and I just wanted to say thank you. On behalf of my family and all the people that aren't here tonight, deserve our gratitude for many, many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I do miss these meetings, especially young authors and all that other stuff. So, glad to be here, especially to thank Tony. I don't want to repeat what everybody has said, because I want to respect everybody's time as well. So, I'm going to add a couple of things to what's already been said about Tony. Don't mistake his calm demeanor for a lack of passion. He is so passionate about all the decisions he's made. He's pragmatic, he's practical, he is a calming force on the board, talked me down off the ledge many times, and I appreciate that for the nine years that I got to serve with you. I had kids, stepkids all the way to my own kids from '95 to 2017 through the district, and this wouldn't have happened the way it did if it wasn't for leaders like Tony with the, especially understanding the finances and figuring out how to give Lamborghini education on a Chevy budget. It was fantastic. And I'll leave you with this last story. It was 2017, Triple I Conference. If you're new to the board, go to the Triple I Conference every year, you're going to get so educated. Tony was with me. I had just suffered a bunch of injuries, I probably shouldn't have been there, and we went for pancakes to Wildberry Sunday morning, and it was more crowded than all these young author parents taking pictures. It was, I couldn't get through, and I was in fear of getting injured again. Tony was my lead blocker. He got us through the crowd, got us a great table, and got me out of there without any injury. So, thanks for that, Tony. And congratulations on all your service.
Thank you.
My pleasure to work with you.
Don Drizell.
All right, Don Drizell, first-time caller, long-time listener. Tony, I don't want your ego to get swollen too much. I had to laugh, because Kim pointed out the fact that you only had 20 years, she had 22, so she won up here. And Mark, it's not like you didn't play a role either. So, thank you for your, you know, your financial direction there, Tony, but, you know, let's not forget, he played a big role in that, too. I just want to thank you for 20 years. I didn't even realize it was that long. You outlasted John. You outlasted Scott. Be worried, Jessica. You've just been a foundation for the school board. I know when I first was interested in running, you were one of the people I talked to. You didn't know me from Adam, yet you opened up your phone, you talked to me, we sat down, learned a lot from you, and all throughout the years that I was on the school board, just as Mike said, you were a guiding force. So, thank you for your time. 10 years from now, 20 years from now, people will look at the notes and go, "Who's Tony Quagliano?" And that's the ultimate compliment. You weren't a grandstander, you weren't the big name, but you got the job done for 20 years, and every family in this community owes you a debt of gratitude. So, thank you, Tony.
Thanks, Dave.
You'll be missed.
Thank you.
Well, you know, Tony, I wasn't going to let you leave tonight without me, a parent, special needs parent coming up and at least making one comment. But I wanted to first say to everyone, thank you, because the board members that are up here, like board members that I've had in the past that I've interacted, they always say that people come across your path for a reason. And I've been fortunate enough that when you can come into a room and know a majority of the people and you've had interactions with them, so I want to thank everybody for your time and your commitment as a parent and as a taxpayer in the community, that you are appreciated for the hard work. And I know many people don't understand, unless they come to these meetings, what type of work that you guys all do put into that, and I also, my former members in the past, for them as well, too. But, Tony, you know, we've had interactions over the years, especially when it came to special needs. You knew I was a voice, I try to be the best voice for our students with special needs. Continue to do that. I know your chapter is changing, and I appreciate your family lending you to us for all those years, and I'm glad you pressed my road with my son's journey, because he is aging out at the end, hard to believe, he's aging out at the end of this year. But I won't forget our interactions over, but you're on the block, or our conversations, and you also helped to educate me as an individual. And I know they say there's advantages to being up there, there's advantages to sitting back here over the years, too. And when you and Mark and Kevin and the other board members would talk about financials, that's just another strength of mine in my life, but I've learned, and I've really appreciated everything that you've taught me, and it was you and your family, all the best, and enjoy their time with them, because life is short. Thanks.
Thank you, Kim.
Dr. Burke.
Good evening, everyone. Well, I don't know how I can top all the great comments that we've heard so far, so maybe I'll talk about my tax bill instead. No, I'll come next month and do that. Let me just offer a few words and maybe personal reflections, some of which may already have been said, but I can say without doubt, this district would not be what it is today without Tony Quagliano, and I'm not exaggerating. I started here in July of 2006, and a month later, we had a board opening, and Tony got appointed to the board. It was a whole different time. For those of you that are new, and that's most of you that were not here in that time, this district was a very, very different place. We had, as was mentioned earlier, we couldn't make payroll at the end of the year. We had to do tax anticipation warrants to pay our employees. Our test scores were barely above the state average, which was completely unacceptable. That's the world that Tony came on to the board. There was also a lot of acrimony among board members in the community at that time. Being a board member was a tough, tough job. In fact, we had several elections where it was hard to even get people to run, and I see that's changed, because every intersection I drove through in the last month, there were a lot of signs. And that's a good thing, that people want to serve on the board. So, that's the world that he came into. He came in being the financial genius, as has been mentioned, and he is that, but he's a lot more. And I learned quickly how much he cared for the students of the district, how much he cared about the curriculum and student achievement issues that we had. He wanted to make this the best district possible and to do it in a way that was cost-effective for our taxpayers, and he was masterful at helping us balance both of those things. And that is why this has become the district that it is today. So, on a personal note, though, I have to say, because we started so close to each other, and as I said, it was a tumultuous time, Tony was always, always helpful to me, and there were times I needed it. There were times I needed to just call and say, "I need advice," or "I need help with this," or "I need help with a board member." Tony, as busy as he is, even when it was tax season, would spend as much time as it took talking to me. And you know what a superintendent, he always held me accountable, but he always supported me, and he supported this district. And I can't tell you, Tony, more than you possibly could know how appreciative I am of everything you've done for me personally and for this district. And so, with that, again, I thank you for your service, I thank you for being a friend, and I'm glad that we're still friends, and I'm sorry to see you go, but it is well-deserved that you have time to get off the board. So, thank you.
All right, one more. Kevin Gentry.
Name's Kevin Gentry, Huntley, Illinois, class of 2015 parent, former board member. If I was given the finale for a reason, I won't be deserving of that, because I already held a lot of good commentary, but I did want to come out tonight and express my thanks, gratitude, congratulations to Tony on a phenomenal Board of Education career. I hesitate to call it a career, because I think he could always come back. Tony and I go back to the, what was alluded to in a few of the comments, the original Financial Advisory Committee, and predates my time a little bit. I believe that was 2025, closer to the turn of the century. When I think of all the years I worked with Tony, certain elements of character stand out. First off was an unwavering objectivity. Tony was always able to take biases out of the equation to drive thoughtful, thorough decision process, which is invaluable. Second was inclusiveness, always seeking out everyone's perspective on an issue, even if the, even in the case where the tyrannical board went against me on the Big Daddy Pizza pricing vote, I'm still appreciative of the inclusive environment. The six-to-one vote, I think, has represented the majority. Openness to consider critiques from others, and I think as a board member, that's probably one of the more valuable skills. For someone that, you know, I could come up here and just rip into the board members, and they would all have to say, "Yeah, thanks, take it into consideration, can't talk about it now." So, that's a huge skill. And others alluded to this as well, but I think the passion as far as how you approach things, a genuine interest in a host of topics, from somewhat obscure to, you know, more of the obvious topics, but always willing to dive into the details. And I recall probably in the Financial Advisory days, hanging out at the now grazed Huntley Middle School and talking as the temperature dropped to like 40 degrees about state funding optimization strategies and how that interacted with the referendum, and talking about the math equations, literally to the point of, "The arms are shivering so much, we've been out there so long." And then a deep knowledge of high school sports in the greater Chicago region area that I will never be able to match. Football playoff time was always fascinating, because I had no clue what all these schools were, but you knew the history, and always good conversation. Most of all, what stands about Tony is stepping up during challenging times of change. You know, referendum controversy back, I'll put it back near the turn of the current century, it's been so long ago, but, you know, that whole era was really a turning point in the district in terms of working through those issues, riding the ship, you know, and actually going down it and co-writing state legislation of all things to get that fixed. And others alluded to that as well, is, you know, benefit not just for our district, but for all districts. Multiple superintendent changes, and I think we won in every step of the way, working through those leadership changes. All the side effects of that, of, you know, reaching out to senior staff and making sure we're all squared away on their contract negotiations. Tony established a high level of trust, driven by his objectivity and balanced approach. And I'm, and I believe it, I was involved in three negotiation sessions, and I believe that they would not have gone as smoothly without Tony's influence and the credibility he built up of being able to be objective, take a balanced approach, listen, listen, and listen some more, and then work through those. Through many other assorted controversies and challenges, Tony always stepped up in that effort for the sake of the greater good. Tony, I have a world of respect for you as a leader and also as a person and a friend. The district is truly better off for your hard work, dedication, and drive for results. You will be missed, but the fruits of your labor will, it's easy for me to say, fruits of your labor will live on. And just a sincere thank you, good luck, enjoy the extra time, and tax season will be only busiest time of year.
You tell me, how is it on the other side?
I miss this place dearly, and I think every day about it and the great people here, but it's time to turn over at some point, so best of luck to you.
Thanks, Kim.
Anybody else? Definitely well done, well deserved. Moving on to number seven, revision and adoption of the agenda, do we see any changes to the agenda? With that, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Can I have a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, keeping with the head of the agenda heads there. Superintendents report.
As in our memo that's in the board book, just a couple of things. On Monday of this week, we had our final guided team meeting with a strategic plan on the development of the long-term goals with the main focus. We are excited to be bringing that probably at the May board meeting on the 17th. I do want to just highlight that throughout the process, lots and lots of feedback from a variety of different stakeholders in the five identified areas of priority of future readiness, teaching and learning, community engagement, student success, and fiscal stewardship. And so, much more to bring in our presentation, but again, that final strategic plan recommendation will come to the board at the May regular meeting, and we're excited to share that. Tomorrow, in our newsletter, we'll go out to our family and staff a few days early, but with a little bit longer weekend, and in there will be the April episode of the Raider Roundtable. Kimmy said she thinks it's the best one yet, Mr. Almeyer, so maybe it's the topic finance, but it's coming out, I can't see it, so it was all-around operational efficiency and sustainability. And so, Dr. Burke, just wanted to give a shout-out, he has noted that for many years, he had not been invited to be on that, so he finally got his opportunity to get in front of the camera there. So, and our May episode will be grabbing off the school year, and we are going to have two student guests, talk about two high school seniors, talking about their experience and their career here in the district. So, it should be a lot of fun. And in June, we will roll out the roundtable of all about the strategic plan. We talked about our Raiders Roundtable, our chronic absenteeism. Again, we're seeing a slight increase here as the cold and flu season has left us, so we are excited to kind of see where we end with the fruits of the labor that happened around that chronic absenteeism campaign for this school year. Any questions of anything that was from last month, a couple of the highlights?
Thank you. We will move on to number nine, the Strategic Superintendent of Learning and Innovation.
Hey, good evening. I have two updates for you tonight. We have just culminated our state assessments, so you just finished up the Illinois session of readiness, the IAR, and then the ACP assessment at the high school. And so, we just want to say thank you to all of our staff and our students and families for prioritizing this time and trying to help show exactly what our students have learned, and we'll be anxiously awaiting the results of our test scores, be able to show the thing that's occurred. So, that's wrapping us by end time, part of the school year. The second update I have is regarding a literacy grant the state of Illinois most recently offered to any district to apply for. We were allocated $4,000 if we chose to apply, so we did go ahead and submit, and we wrote that grant to help support materials aligned to our literacy plan that we approved a year and a half ago here. And so, we are excited to have those funds. We do know that this was just the initial amount of dollars promised from the state, and if additional dollars are available, because other districts did not go ahead and take their funds, those who applied first will get priority, and so we're hopeful we'll get additional dollars, because we got in there really quickly to help get some of those funds. So, we just want to give you that update, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them at the time.
Any questions? All right, thank you, Beth. All right, moving to number 10, the Strategic Superintendent of Special Services.
I'm there. I'm so excited always to share the great work we're doing in our department, and tonight is a special night. We actually had a student recognition for one of our friends who couldn't be here, so we will talk about giving you here in just a minute, but we do some really great things in our district around special education, and in particular about supporting some of our students with unique needs, especially in the area of communication. Do you remember, we did core boards, communication boards on our playgrounds. That work was spearheaded by a lot of the voices in our district and also the work of our AAC facilitators. If you don't know what that means, don't worry, because they're going to tell you. I'm really excited to highlight some of their work, actually, let them highlight their work. We just have two outstanding AAC facilitators in our district, and they just do so much to support the work of our students, so they have access to their learning, to their communication, to their peer group. They do some really great things to make sure that events like our Raiders Read Together over the summer, that our students who have unique communication needs are able to fully participate in that. They are really leading the work in all of that. So, I am really, really pleased to invite Deb Ryan and Carly Smith, who are the two AAC facilitators in our district. So, welcome. I know they're very excited to share their work.
The green light's on, am I good?
Green's good.
Carly, are you feeling a lot of pressure? This is probably Tony's last, like, spotlight. I'm feeling extra pressure now.
A little bit of pressure, always.
Real pressure.
And we brought goodies, so that you guys can see a little bit of what this looks like. We have our core boards down here, I think you can set it right there. Sorry, I'm just trying to get my computer up here.
We are multimodality, we're big fans of multimodality learning. So, we've got visuals for you on the board, we've got our voices for your listening entertainment, and then we've got tactile exploration, if you guys want to explore what these are as we're talking, it might help.
All right. Okay, so, this is us. So, me and Debbie split this role. It's a full-time position in the district, but we split it. We both are speech-language pathologists, so that allows us to still have a caseload and see students and have therapy half of our week, and then the other half of the week we spend as AAC facilitators. Debbie covers the, like, ECC through elementary buildings, and then I support the secondary, so middle school, high school, light, and then our private place students. So, what we're going to do is just tell you about what is AAC, and then our top 10 highlights of things that we're really proud of and want to share with you guys, because it's a lot thanks to you all. And then we'll have questions, too, if anybody has any questions. So, what does AAC mean? It stands for Augmented and Alternative Communication. So, what that So what that looks like is when there's a student who may have difficulty with their speech, but they are verbal, might be hard to understand or have some disability that makes it difficult for them to produce sound. We want to find something to augment that or support that, supplement that, so some tools that they could use to help support. Alternative would be a completely different way to communicate. So if you think about, like, sign language, it's a totally different language, and it's a different modality to communicate. We have some iPads that we gave you guys. That's typically what a lot of our students use. It's different than verbal speech. There's not really verbal speech output, so we need to find an alternative communication method. And then, of course, communication is just how we exchange messages with each other. So that's why we shortened it to AAC because it's very long. This is just a visual for those of you who don't have the things that they're looking at in front of you. But we kind of consider a couple of different levels of AAC. So no tech, you don't need anything, but you use your hands, body language, you know, facial expressions. Light tech would be like printable visuals that we can use to support students. Mid-tech would be there is a voice output, but it's not text, it's not like a smart technology yet. So the switch buttons, you could hit a switch and it would say something like a greeting. And then high tech would be, you know, like an iPad or some type of smart technology which you can navigate, and the screen is dynamic and changing, and it's also a lot more robust. There's a lot more access to language on there.
All right, we're going to channel our David Letterman and do our top 10 list for AAC highlights in the district. And we are honored to be here to do this. I don't know if Jessica remembers this, but I was supposed to do this presentation in March of 2020. And that's what happened in March of 2020. It got canceled, so here we are, five years later. All right, so we'll start with number 10, and we're kicking it off with Infinity Tech. I don't know if you guys know what Infinity Tech is, but it's an assistive technology co-op that our district is a member of. And for the AT team here in our district, we get to go to quarterly in-person meetings, and it's a fantastic opportunity. We collaborate, we share ideas, we share resources, find out if there are changes in the laws of AT or regulations. It's a wonderful opportunity for us. Our favorite part of Infinity Tech is they offer an annual outstanding AT student award. And as DeeDee mentioned, Kane Torres to the right is this year's recipient of that award. He is a student that was at the elementary, and we will be honoring him a week from tonight at a banquet. So very excited. The other pictures are some previous award winners that we had. All right, number nine. Okay, this is called our universal language system. About three years ago, we made a decision to transition the way that we considered students for high-tech AAC. We called it the AAC Universal Language. After a lot of deliberation and a lot of seeking support from other districts and our staff internally, we decided on the touch chat HD with Word Power. That's the app that's on the app that you guys are looking at right now. The positive rewards of making this transition and streamlining it have been remarkable. I'm going to highlight four for you. One of them, it has streamlined the training that Carly and I provide for our staff. It expedited the AAC trials, so it gets these devices into our students' hands way quicker. It has improved capacity building amongst the entire district for using evidence-based strategies that facilitate AAC. And then lastly, there's a consistency now in the visual and the motor planning from boards like this up to the iPads that you guys have in your hands. All right, number eight. This is iPad management system. I don't see anyone from IT here, but this is our shout-out slide for them of gratitude. When I first started in 2018, we had about 15 students using high-tech AAC devices. My partner at the time and I would have to go to every building, to every student, track them down, find their iPads, load the app off of iTunes, set the Wi-Fi setting. We'd have to go for every iOS update, every app update. You guys know how many of those come on your phone. It was time-intensive. So IT came and they saved the day, and we have an MDM iPad management system for the whole district. It's called Mogul. It has been a game changer for our department. All right, number seven. This is what we call the paradigm shift. This, I'm going to tell you a little story, it'll be fast. So about five years ago, I was in a meeting, it was an eligibility meeting. We were considering different placements for the students that we were working with. And one of our certified staff members said, well, that student uses AAC, so they need to go into a self-contained program. And I just about fell out of my chair, and my instant thought was, we have a lot of work to do with this, right? So I would say I am, we are very proud to tell you, as of this moment, we have 14 students in our district using high-tech AAC devices such as you have in front of you, and their primary vocation in the district is general education. So that's a big win. And I wanted to add, our quest for AAC acceptance and meaningful inclusion is ongoing.
Okay, so something else that we're proud of is just the streamlining the process and managing our workload. And so we have a good referral process with our team and teachers. And so we created a website, and this is shared with our, mostly our SLP team and our administrators, so they know exactly where to go for any resources for AAC research, training. Like, you can see up there implementation guides, and then there's a referral contact so they can fill it out. We get it straight to our emails, and we're pretty fast when it comes to if there's a referral and there's a student who wants to trial AAC. I mean, I'm talking like next day, we get it in their hands. So that's something we're really proud of because it's just made it really efficient for us. And then Ms. Lombard talked about this, Raiders Read Together. And so last year, it was Charlotte's Web, and every student, you know, in the district went home with a novel, but we wanted to make sure to include our learners who might not be able to read a traditional novel, but still support them. So we were able to come up with, and then we also have for this year as well, a modified book. So it's shorter, there's visuals supported in there so that they can still enjoy and be a part of the whole process of reading. There's also manipulative, so each character has their own little, you know, almost like a little puppet show to make it more interactive and engaging for students who need it. So we're really proud to be able to be a part of that for the district.
And Carly, that last year, I believe it was the first year you had done that.
Yeah.
And we had students and families that would come on a regular basis on Monday and bring those activities.
Awesome.
And not only were they utilizing them, but then sharing with the other students. And we were actually taking away some ideas of the things that they were able to do with that and could be able to be included in the same way with their peers and families and then those of us who were putting on those activities. I mean, we really, really appreciate the things that your team had done to make sure all of our students feel included and to be able to get out ahead of that for this year.
Yeah.
Already seeing some of that.
Yeah, it's already, we already have it. We have the kids, we have the kids ready to go. So when the emails go out to families, there'll be a survey, and they can request this, and we will make as many kits as are requested. So yeah, that's exciting. Another really cool thing that we did the past two years, this year, we had a lot on our plate, so we didn't extend it, so did the teacher. So we kind of took a pause on this this year, but for the past two years, we worked with a PLTW teacher at the high school, and she had a project for her senior-level class, and they spent the entire year working on this, and it's just creating a project, a project or product or a solution of some sort. So here's a problem, and here's our solution. And they spent a lot of time working on this. And so we came to her and we said, well, we have some rights and problems with some of the tools that we use, specifically like cases or stands for these iPads just that are more durable. So we brought this to her, and they were so open to it, and our engineering department was so open to it. We passed around these little tactile cues too. They use their 3D printer to print those for us. So it's just a lot of collaboration with them, and the students loved it. So they spent all year, and there's a picture, and we had a What's Great in 158 about it as well. So it was really fun for us because we got to go in and kind of consult with these students, and they got to ask questions, and I think they felt really proud to make something that was specifically for students in our district that we're going to use. Recently, we came up with a protocol for AAC device purchases. So students who are graduating or transitioning out of the district either upon their senior year graduation or transition out of the light program, we felt that they needed to continue to have access to their devices. And there wasn't like an official process of what that looks like, but with DeeDee's support, like, we cleaned that up real quick. And now any student who is either moving for any reason, you know, we wouldn't want them to lose access to their tool. If they're moving or transitioning or graduating, they can purchase their device from us for a pretty cheap rate, I would say. So we just really don't want students who we know benefit from having this tool for communication to lose access to that at any point in their life. So we're really proud of that.
All right, number two. We are thrilled to share with you that we are on an ongoing quest to support our students that have complex bodies in communication. Not all of our students can use their hands and their arms to access the devices such as you guys are up there. So we are the proud owners of two eye gaze systems, and we have two students actively using these eye gaze systems in exploratory phase. So as you can see in these pictures, and Carly has a cute little video, exploratory phase means they're learning that their eyes can control the screen. And then after they did a game similar to this, then we will bring in the communication apps, and they will access those. It's a huge learning curve and learning process, but it's really fun to see these kids who struggle to move and really can't play with toys be able to play something. It's been really soul-filling, I will say. And then number one last is data. We all love data. Here it is. All right, so I mentioned in 2018, when I first took this position, we were at about 15 to 18 high-tech AAC users. And as you can see from this chart, 2020, we jumped up to 36, 2022 up to 66, and 2025 up to 105. We've tripled the number of high-tech AAC users in the district over five years, which is remarkable. So I'm sure, you know, anyone can look at those numbers and really be impressed by that. But when Carly and I look at those numbers, we see 105 of our students in our district that now have access to functional communication that they otherwise wouldn't have, and that is everything to us. And that's a segue to our gratitude slides. For the sake of time, I won't go through each of these line items. I literally have really heartfelt things to say on behalf of all these categories. But that's a picture of our speech pathology team. They are warriors. When Carly and I are not around, they are our advocates for AAC. And I definitely want to highlight administration from, you know, from building level up to UHS to COH, the unwavering support for communication and AAC is appreciated so much. And then again, shout out to that IT department. They are the backbone for assistive technology.
So thank you guys again, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask, or we're always available, open. If you want to learn more or see this in action, we're always willing to do that.
And we have a gift. And we have a gift for our board members, for all of your support. We didn't forget to thank you on the other slide. So we have little totes, and they say, "Communication looks different for everyone."
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Carly.
All right, if you don't mind, can I ask just a couple of questions?
Of course.
Sorry. The, on the data slide, you're getting these tools to the students who need it. Is that not growth in the number of students needed? If you're identifying more students who can take advantage of it?
Right, it's a little bit of both because I would say that, like, our ECC population is typically the biggest AAC users, and they're ones who kind of fluctuate a little bit with communication. So we're identifying sooner when a student has a communication difficulty, whatever that looks like, getting the device in their hand very quickly. And then we also just, yeah, are identifying quicker as well. So it's kind of a both, really.
So because you have a kind of standardized approach to it, you can move it.
Mm-hmm.
And the second one, not to put you on the top, but what's next after this?
Oh, we were going to include future, but we're like, I don't know if we're going to have time.
Yeah, we were worried about time. Future, well, I know for, I can, off the top of my head, continuing to build capacity. We have things in motion to really work closely with our dual-language and ELL population and access testing and using AAC. That's been a big thing. I'm going to say the word phones. We've really been talking about phones. As you guys know, when our kids get into middle school and high school, phones seems to be what they have. And we have seen some of our students, parents have bought these apps and put them on their phones, and the buy-in has been remarkable. But we know that's a complicated conversation, so that's for the future.
So that's why it's for the future, because we don't really know the answer. But like, you know, especially our transition-level students who are adults, and adults typically have phones, and that's, you know, how we all navigate things. So what that looks like for them and how we can, you know, provide training on that and opportunities for using phones, because we all have them, and it's just kind of how it is. But we don't know what that looks like.
Oh, I have a question.
Yeah.
You were talking about sign language being a way that you're able to communicate with students that are potentially nonverbal. So we had our sign language club up here, I think it was last month. So is there an opportunity, because you were talking about the partnership you did with Project Lead the Way at the high school, but would there be an opportunity for you to engage that sign language club with your group of students as well to maybe like make a little bit more of a collaborative approach where they could use their sign language skills and then also work with their fellow students on communicating?
Yeah, the sign language club is at Martin, which is where Debbie works, so that's where I'm letting her take this one.
Yes, it is formed by a speech-language pathologist that I work with at Martin. And we actually have one student from our self-contained program who's a high-tech AAC user who might be joining the club. We've been talking with the parent right now, and we've offered it up as an option. And yes, it is, and I will tell you this, the way we approach our students with complex communication needs is through multimodal communication, and that can include anything from sign language to high-tech AAC, to gestures, to tone of voice, to facial expressions, you name it. We take whatever they can give us.
So yeah, also future, room for future growth opportunities.
I did. So just to follow up, because I'm a little fuzzy here. These AAC devices, are these just at school, or do these go home and the parents actually interact with these too?
They go everywhere with the student. So they have access to them in the community, at home. They bring them on their vacations with them. We, when we give them to the student, it is a loan because it's district property. But with the, you know, we encourage them to bring them wherever they're going so that they can always have reliable communication.
And then from a phone standpoint, does it still use the same grid that I see on your board and on this, but on a much smaller device now?
Yes, so I actually have the app on my phone because I was like, oh, what does this look like? And it's just like a much smaller scale, but I've trialed it with a couple of students. I work at the middle school level. And they pick it up so quickly. I'm like, are they going to be able to, you know, push the button that small? And they're like bam, bam, because they're so used to the motor plan.
Okay.
So yeah, and this is just the universal language. We do have a couple other apps that other students use that are different applications because there's different theories and the motor planning is a little bit different. But this is the main one. I would say the majority of our users use one that looks just like this.
Okay. Because I was curious about this being universal, so there should be one app or a couple of different versions.
Yep, and the app can get on any iOS device.
Okay.
And more other devices out there that aren't iOS can get it as well.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you for your interest in asking. DeeDee calls this our love language, and that is indeed true.
Yeah, I said we could be here for hours.
We could. We're really, well, thank you. I am going to collect those supplies so I can bring them back, but not the bag. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Anyone have another iPad that one? I got mine. Oh, you got one.
You got ours. No, 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 we passed it on.
All right, so now we move to number 11, Director of Communications and Public Engagement.
Good evening, board. For this meeting, you guys have gotten in, updated with the communications dashboard, some of our metrics, and also there's FOIA report there too, and just wondered if there were any questions about any of it.
I have a question about the FOIA report. So I just, it looked like there were a lot of what I would call AI-generated FOIA requests.
Really?
I'm wondering if that stuff we're going to have to watch a little bit more because they can generate thousands of FOIA requests very quickly now.
Yes, that FOIA request was received by many schools in the district, and it certainly is, has been discussed.
Um, and attorneys are getting involved in some of this too, just to better understand what's happening. And we fulfilled these like we would others. In this case, the information was on the state board's website. So we could direct them there. Uh, but yeah, I think you're right. I think it's something we need to pay attention to and watch quickly.
Kind of jumped out when I looked it up.
Yeah, because there's 10. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? All right. With that, we will move to number 12, the operations and maintenance updates.
Good evening. I want to update to, send to the natural gas procurement. If you recall back in March, we locked in a fixed basis portion of our natural gas at one and a half cents per therm, giving us a 78% reduction in our current, from our current rates. On April 4th, we presented with an opportunity to lock in a portion of our 6.9 max at 41% per therm, giving us a 22% reduction rates from our current, what we're paying currently. That current rate is 63 cents per therm. Thank you to Mr. Troy for stepping in.
Yeah, we locked, sorry, no, we locked it in really quickly once that opportunity.
Yeah, the market was all over that day.
Yes.
And we were on it.
Yeah.
With the help of our energy supplier. Thank you. Any questions on that?
Thank you for that. Uh, we'll move to 13, looking at the 13 President's Report. Any more discussion in due items to bring up? All right. With that, there's the minutes here from the April 3rd committee as a whole. Any reason not to look forward as President's? All right. And 13.3, recognizing outgoing board members. This is our opportunity to talk and thank everybody for their service. So, and a couple of, uh...
I'm sorry. Or a couple of days. So, um, so two years ago, when I stepped into this role, I talked about change and how change is really our only constant. When we're personally involved or impacted by change, that sometimes is voluntary change and other times it's change that happens to us. Tonight, we recognize that there's going to be a change on our board due to the past election. And as we're acknowledging some of those who will be leading us, I would like to say a heartfelt thank you to all of those who ran for the Huntley School District Board of Education. We had more interests than seats open, and that says a lot about our community involvement and engagement. It's actually a blessing to work in an environment and in a district where individuals want to serve. For those who were not elected, again, thank you for putting yourself out there, for wanting to engage in or the support of our school district. I truly hope each and every one of those individuals remains engaged in other opportunities that we have within our district. And now to the three individuals, who this will be their last full board meeting. From the bottom of my heart, I say thank you. Michael, Dana, and Tony, my words cannot express the gratitude that I have for you, your service to this district, the staff and the students, and the community, and especially for the support that you've given me personally. While you may have served on the board for different lengths of time, you would all come in and give your time to, one, truly learn about our district, ask questions, learn about every sector of this organization, so that you could do your part in helping guide and shape the decisions of this district. It's been a pleasure getting to work for you and alongside each of you. Michael and Dana, while it's only been two years or near two years that you've been on the board, you really came in, became part of this board, and as we came together, we worked hard to accomplish some really great things as a group of seven board members during that time. And Tony, I think I lost track of how long it was, but I've been reminded of how many years. I was off by a smidge. And during that time, I worked in many different capacities within the district, and you worked with many different members on the board over those years, weathering many different storms in terms of challenges that the district faced. But your main study and help the district, again, accomplished many great things during that time. So tonight, we would like to present each of you with a token of our appreciation. And the first is, for each of you, with a crystal plaque, thanking you for your service in Huntley 158. So again, your name, your years of service in that, that thank you for your service to the students, the staff, and the community of Huntley 158. Tonight, we'd also like to start a new tradition, sharing with our outgoing board members a new pass that we're calling the Platinum Pass. So you know, we did the Silver Pass for our seniors. This Platinum, well, you're even better. So this Platinum Pass will allow you to come to any home, high school, or middle school athletic, extracurricular, fine arts performance as our special guest for eternity. You just present this pass, and you will have a ticket at the ticket gate or the performance door. Huntley 158 truly is a hard place to leave, and I want you to remember that you will forever be part of the Huntley 158 family. So again, thank you for your service, your dedication, and your commitment to this great thing.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Any other reporters?
Yeah, I'll go. And say a little about each of you guys. I just wrote them up. Um, but I just want to say thanks to Mike for your dedicated service on the school board for the past two years. Been a steady, passionate voice, someone who always can, has kept focus on what matters most, doing what's best for the teachers, students, and our schools. Never got caught up in distractions or drama, just clear priorities, smart decisions, unwavering dedication. And your presence brought clarity, purpose, and a quiet strength to the sport. So thank you for your time and your leadership and the heart you brought to your role. And Dana, I want to recognize you for your service on our school board for the last 18 months. Though your time was short, you brought an unwavering commitment to bettering... You got this. Come on. An unwavering commitment to bettering our district from day one. You stood strong for our teachers, pushed for student achievement, and worked tirelessly to raise standards, all while remaining fiscally responsible and focused on eliminating distractions. Dana leaves with passion, fairness, and a calm, thoughtful approach. She's kind, considerate, and deeply supportive, yet never afraid to hold anyone accountable. Her presence has challenged us to do better and believe bigger. Dana, thank you for your leadership, your heart, and your vision. You've made a lasting impact. We are better because of you. Thank you. And last but not least, Tony, I'll reflect on the board, you know, relationship here. I just want to honor you on someone who has been a steady and trusted presence on our school board for many years. Your service has been defined by qualities of honesty, reliability, dedication, and trust. You've been the kind of board member we can always count on, to show up, to speak with integrity, and to make decisions with thoughtfulness and care. You lead with kindness and consideration, always keeping the best interests of students, staff, and families at the center. Your quiet strength, your calm wisdom, and genuine heart have made you a respected voice here. And Mr. Quaglano, thank you for giving so much of yourself to this district over so many years. You've set an example, not only in leadership, but in character, and your impact will be felt long after your time on the board here. Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments?
Yeah. I'll start it this way, because I had written a whole bunch of stuff down. Funny thing is, with having a lot of people, is everybody steals your thunder. And so many of the things that I did jot down were reflected. First, let me say thank you to the people that ran in this last election. Tony, as you know, and everybody who has run for office, whether they win or not, it takes a lot of effort to put yourself out there, to, to make yourself vulnerable to the public, to answer questions that normally don't really come up on a daily basis, and put a lot of thought into that. So to, to each and every one of the people that have run in any election, it takes a lot of courage to do that. And, and so I wanted to express that appreciation. To Mike and Dana, I haven't worked with you very long. It has been a short tenure, but thank you for your time on the board. Thank you for your service. I wish we had the time to learn about each other a little bit deeper, but being the time that what it is, I'm glad that, as Carol Burnett put it, I'm glad we had this time together. For those that are old enough to remember Carol Burnett, or watch the reruns on TV these days. But mostly to Tony, because if, I don't know if I could pinpoint any one person that had more of an impact on my decision to be here, other than my wife, more than Tony. I met Tony at, standing at that very podium, addressing some of the things that had gone on board-wise in public. And I remember staying for the entire meeting and talking to him, talking to you, Tony, talking to him afterwards. And one of the things that Tony said is, "Don't be afraid of us. Don't be afraid to approach us. Don't be a stranger. We are approachable people." And that just really stuck with me from those, that first meeting, getting onto the financial advisory committee for a brief period of time, and then eventually deciding to run. And that's one of the things that I have tried to anchor myself to, principle-wise, is to be approachable. Whether it is initiating a conversation or accepting a conversation, whether it's email in any way, but trying to be approachable. I'm not perfect with it. I've tried to improve, and goodness knows I've had a long time to try and get better. But it's being approachable that has really stuck with me. And, and that is one of the ways that I try to serve the community is not just the, being out there, but also to be open to talking to people. I, um, I did start to do a little bit of internet stalking, and because one of the people that I wanted to come here was actually Jamil, if you remember Jamil, who was always here from the Daily Herald and loved to come out here. And you know what? Some of the articles that I found on the Daily Herald website, the archive stuff, they were always seeking Tony out for a quote. And it seemed like Jamil was always there, "Hey, Tony, you got a quote. You got a quote." And so I thought, you know, of all the people that really, in addition to our cast of celebrities tonight, that should be here was Jamil to see if he can get one more quote out of you. But it just ended on the pass. And, and so I, I had found the articles that talked about some of those corrections that were done legislatively. And I know that you worked to write that legislation. And what I also appreciate wasn't just the writing of the legislation and finding the problem, but one of the things that I really appreciated was that you got to work with legislators and go down to Springfield to be part of that process. And back in the day, it was Mike Tryon, if people remember that name, and Senator Altop, Cam Altop, both out of Crystal Lake. And, and they were instrumental in moving that forward through legislative, if I remember correctly. But you got to work with them and be part of that entire process. And we haven't done too much of that as a board or had the need to do it, but that was truly instrumental. The article that I found referenced that the problem was a $2 million a year problem that accumulated year on year. And by the time the error was found, it had been between eight and $10 million that had been lost to our district. So it wasn't just about the effort, or it wasn't just about the money, but it was about the effort. And I think that was an early indication of passion, the desire to see this school district grow, to see it succeed, and truly working and putting yourself out there to make this community, to make this school district all the more better, and make sure that money that we were supposed to receive, we would receive justly and appropriately from the state of Illinois. And that, that's, that's a story that Kim touched on, but I managed to find the article. I have learned a great deal about school boarding from you over the years, and I appreciate the wisdom, the, the knowledge, the wise counsel, and what I will miss is actually the dry sense of humor. So I'm hoping that I'm able to, you know, insert myself and kind of take on that, not sarcasm, but just that wit, and, and still find a way to navigate tough times with a smile. The COVID year was, was really hard. And that was a time when, as board members, we had to lean on each other because there were a lot of people that were leaning on us, for the better, for the worse, whatever it was, was in both directions and from all directions. And I, I appreciated the camaraderie that we had as a team to navigate those waters and still kind of walk out of that entire situation with a sense of sanity. It was a hard time for me and for many people. And as a board member, I had, I worked with my board members, fellow board members in one way or another, to try and find that North Star, where I could say, yep, this is, this is what I'm clinging to through this really tough, dire time. And, and I thank you for helping me navigate the financial years, the wagon train years of the great migrations and building of schools, the refinancing of our bonds, taking advantage of low interest rates that most people don't understand, don't want to understand, don't want to under, don't want to look into it. But when it's their mortgage and they're taking advantage of zero interest rates or very, very low interest rates, they do that in a heartbeat. Well, we did that as a school district too. And it was through Tony's guidance and counsel, through Mark Altmeier's guidance and counsel, and the people Chapman and Cutler, who helped us navigate those waters as well. It goes beyond the finance. It goes deeper, much deeper. And, and I'm appreciative of all of it. I'm sorry that you left early, because I wanted to thank her too, that's something that I've done with any and every board member that has cycled off. We sitting up here do put a lot of time and effort into the things that we do because we do it for the love of our community, for the love of our students, our staff, and the district as a whole. And regardless whether people have served for a short period of time, or an extended period of time, or Tim Skage's millennium of time. It is all, the common denominator in all of that is the love for this district and the love for making it better. So thank you so much for making the woodpile a little bit higher than when you got here and leaving this place, far better place than when you found it. Thank you from the bottom of my heart and with, with all the dry wit that I can muster in a very emotional five-minute speech. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Any other comments? I guess I'll finish just with a couple of them. I'll keep it under the, the longest time. But the, I'll keep it under that. And I just want to say first, when you talk about public service, the first thing you have to do is step forward. That's what Mike did. I can still remember the Saturday when he put his name out there and he said, "I'll run." Running in this district, when there are a lot of candidates, is not an easy thing. There's a lot of stress, and there's a lot of things that go on for that whole election process, and then you're on here. And it takes a lot to step forward, and Mike has done a good job on the board. So Mike is the one I actually believe. I met Mr. Quaglano when I made my first public commentary. You probably don't remember it. I remember it.
I do.
I know some people out here remember it.
I remember them all.
The room looked a little bit different then, there were the two people in here. Quite fun, but you, I've really appreciated working with you and really getting to know you. And I think we definitely, I think I've found ways to work together. I think there's a lot of things. The night that we appointed Dana was one of the most amazing things. I know a lot of people probably give you crap about that, but...
They might. I don't know. I didn't say that.
I saw the light bulb go off, and that's when we ended that meeting, at 12:30 at night or whatever it was. So amazing thing. But I really enjoyed working with you. I will just, uh, working with you for the next few years. And lastly, Dana, you're the one I've known the longest on here, and it started maybe the opposite side of what Mr. Troy said about COVID. Many of us came together because of COVID. We, we have two kids that share the same year, but we're in totally different orbits, different things. They didn't really know each other, but we got to know each other. You organized that meeting at the Legion, and we decided to go, and Cora decided to go, and the rest is history. And, but that's really what it is out here in the community, is we need to bring everybody together. And you always think about all the kids here and making sure that our kids get the out. that our kids get the impact too. I hope it's working. Thank you. All right. With that, any other comments?
Yeah, I'll just, um, you know, even though it's been two short years, I, I've appreciated serving with you guys. Um, you, you know, some people say it's a thankless job, but I think it, it is a, it's a well-deserved job. Um, and, uh, I've already talked to Tony, but, um, I'm a better board person because of Tony. So, thank you.
What do you think? First and foremost, every board member I've ever worked with, I've, I've taken away something from. I, I valued, um, various bits and pieces that I've gained from each one of you. Maybe only been on for a bit, but, uh, I felt like I did step out, um, a little bit, but I felt it was necessary. I don't think you disappointed me one bit. I think you did a fantastic job, the time you've been on the board, and I really appreciate, you know, the, the effort you've put in to being a board member. Michael, yeah, I, I know you had to step out quite a bit, and I, I honestly, you know, from our first meeting, um, before you guys came on, I just felt like we clicked a bit. I, I really, um, think you're, you know, enjoy you personally quite a bit, and I, and I appreciate the time and effort you put forth on behalf of, uh, the community. It, it does take quite a bit to be that person who steps up. All, all of you are to be commended in that regard. It, it's not an easy thing to just decide you're going to be on a school board, an unpaid volunteer job, um, that you're doing, and trying to serve your community in the best way. I will tell you, um, I will go back to the time when I just moved out here. If I, if I ever thought I'd be on a school board, I mean, that was the last thing in my, ever, I would have ever thought. It wasn't even a thought in my mind, if I ever thought I would get involved and think about school finance. Not even close. I mean, I just, somehow, some way, you mentioned the, the Daily Herald, I mean, at the preface of Jamil, was Jeff Gaunt. And actually, Jeff Gaunt was the original, and these were young guys, both of them, young reporters, who, at that time, the school district, they had a, the Daily Herald had a reporter on our district virtually every day, reporting on us. And it was through, actually through that media attention, that I, that and the combination of my neighborhood, people in my neighborhood who were much more involved than I was, that I started to pay attention, and start to read, and listen, and hear things, and trying to understand, um, how all this worked. I mean, you, you, we're all taxpayers in this district, we all pay a decent sum of money, and we were running referendums that was costing us more money. And, you know, again, that's, I'm not immune to not wanting to pay lesser taxes like everybody else. But also having had three, having three kids that were going to be coming through the school district, that I wanted the district to have financial opportunities in, in order to succeed. So there, there is always a balance that exists in, in, in all of this. And at that point in time, I decided I would start doing a little investigating and paying a little attention, and, uh, through that bit of curiosity, um, was born, where I started attending a, a meeting or two, and ran across the legs of Kevin Gentry, and a few others, um, who were paying attention to what was going on. And, uh, ultimately, I won't get into this long-winded story, but it, 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 you know, obviously surfaced to the point where I got so deep into this, that I, I feel like I was, you know, the only person on earth who actually understood all the mechanics of, of how this all worked. And I, I kept talking to other people, and, um, who, who didn't understand this at all, especially the finance people in the school district at that time. And, and that was, it was a big problem. And again, I don't, my early involvement in this district, I was deemed a district critic, somebody that Kim Skagge would look at, as I stood, walked up to the podium, and would look at me with that eye of, "What's this guy going to say?" And I'm not liking it one bit, okay? Um, I, I was one of those guys, okay, who stepped up and said, "I'm not sure you guys are doing this right, okay? I think there's other ways you could be looking at how you're running your referendum." Okay? And, and that wasn't necessarily, you know, somebody who was welcomed here, uh, necessarily at, at first. But, uh, over time, as I, as they began to understand, and ultimately, as I, you know, closed, um, after the successful referendum, that this wasn't really going to be exactly what they said, um, things started to unfold. So here we go, 20 years later, I'm sitting here, it's time to go. Um, but I do want to, I, I do want to recognize a few, um, people that I've come across. First of all, um, the past board presidents that I've been involved with on the school board, Mike Scala, Sean Green, who, um, I did step off the board after about three years of service. Um, I came on as appointed, and then served the final two years of the seat, and I was done. It was called, I quit back then, it was 2009. Uh, Sean Green became the board president at that time, got a promotion, um, and needed to step down, and he gave me a call and said, "Hey, I've got to leave the board. Would you be willing to come back?" So I, "Yeah, all right, okay." And here I am, whatever many years later. So, uh, we can all thank Sean Green for that. Um, and then, uh, after Sean was Don Drizel, Mike Fleck, and Andy. Um, all of you have done an excellent job in your service as board president. Um, I served for, I believe, three years as board president. It is a much more filed position than a regular board member, and I commend all of you. All of you served this district extremely well, and I appreciate you all very much. Our superintendents, during my time, have been Dr. Burkey, who's here, Dr. Rowe, who we heard from earlier, and then Jessica, who I probably have known longer than anyone in the district. You were, you were either teaching, or you were the, uh, the principal at the...
The Cape Town, right?
Yeah. Where my kids ultimately, uh, K through two. Um, so I've, I've, I've known people in this district for quite a while, um, and Jessica's been involved in so many, I mean, she's in so many different positions, and I'll just tell you, um, she's like the, I've been through so many teacher negotiations, and she's been a common denominator in almost all of them. Um, and, and, and somebody who knew all the, you know, I, I might understand the finances, Mr. Altmeyer understands the finances, but she knows the people. She has the relationships with, with the, all the building people, and, and that was always invaluable in any of those, uh, negotiations, because the numbers are only a small part of what transpires. We've had, um, three board secretaries, Naomi Fettis, Julie Sack, who was, uh, she was more involved than people would know, helping out sometimes, uh, with, uh, some stuff, because all, and then Sharon. All of you, 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 you know, you're down in our closed session meetings, you're hearing a lot of things, um, that go on, uh, in there, and, uh, taking down notes, and so you, you know, you guys are there as long as we are, and I, I thank you all for all the time and effort that you had put forth. Um, and just a couple of special shout-outs, would, I mean, all my contacts within the administration have always been, um, all, all, every one of them has been special. I, I consider all of them friends, um, in that respect. And so I can't single out everybody, but, you know, the two committees I've served on predominantly, as I've been a board member, were, uh, building and grounds, and it was done Doug Rikethic, um, who, you know, just did a bang-up job, and then, uh, Mark, our relationship, um, over these years has, has been, um, I, I, you know, from my end as a finance person, this district was really in not very good shape with its finance, financial office leadership at the time. And, you know, I, I'm not going to, I take, tried to take credit for very little, but I, you know, getting, ultimately choosing Mark Altmeyer, um, as our CFO, um, at that time, was a huge turning point in our district. It, it actually allowed me to get less, be less involved. As a board member, I should not have been as involved in our finances as I was, but having Mark ultimately come on and, and take the lead role, and, and taking care of our finances, and, and, you know, technically being probably the top finance guy in the state. Having that type of finance person in place just allowed me to be able to at least step back a bit, and not be as active as I needed to be in my early days here as a board member. We did have, you know, like I said, all my relationships with the various board members have been from excellent to extremely interesting. I can't get into details on some of them, but just like, someday, people want to ask. I got stories.
Write a book, write a book.
I could. But I do want to, you know, a couple of things that stand out. Uh, Phil Guerin, um, you were sitting, you'd sit in the seat that Dana was in, and this is when I wasn't like a, a president, vice president's role, and I was sitting in Sean 's seat, and I would spend the entire meeting just making Bill Guerin bounce it up and down with my little, so I had a little quip, and that used to be my little joy of being on the school board, was having Mr., trying to keep Mr. Guerin from, uh, exploding with laughter, but, uh, before people talk about my dry wit, yes, there's a, an element to that. And then, you know, Kevin Gentry, the most, you know, I know a, a lot of people give me a lot of credit for a lot of things. Uh, I will tell you, I, I'm one board member, okay? I, I don't deserve all the credit that's been afforded me this evening. Uh, but Kevin Gentry being on this board, I mean, we're fellow CPAs, finance guys, so we do talk a lot of this financial geek stuff. Um, but Kevin in, in various, whether it's environments closed session, or in, we couldn't be more polar opposites in the way we talk and, and, and think about questions. And, and he's the person who would constantly allow me to, to think through issues to the depth, um, that they really needed to be thought through. He was always the, the counter thought process that's, that's invaluable, um, when, when you're thinking through these types of decisions. Okay? So, uh, you, you don't want everybody to be like you. You want others to be able to make you think harder, make, make you think through the process a little bit, and, and I can tell you, um, unequivocally, that Kevin Gentry was that person for me all the time. My, my years with him on this board were, were very meaningful throughout. All of these people have been good friends, um, to me throughout, and I've enjoyed my time with them. So, um, lastly, you know, I, I, you know, Jennifer Troy, I don't think you could have said, you can't say it better than what I'm going to try and say about family and, and my wife, Carol. You know, I'm, I'm a CPA, I'm a tax accountant. I'm, I'm not home a lot from February through middle of April. And so she's already a widow in that respect for many months, and then to take on this task, and to the degree, especially the early years when I was involved, the kids were younger, um, you know, she, she was just a great, been a great mother to, to our kids, um, always there, always involved in the schools, um, making sure that that end of things were taken care of, where I was out yell-aventing at school board meetings, spending till two in the morning, uh, sitting in closed session, going over, um, issues that none of us wanted to be there till two in the morning discussing. Uh, but anyways...
Bring your sunglasses.
Yeah, and it was, there's all kinds of stories related to that. But I, I do want to sincerely thank my wife and, and my three boys, um, they just, uh, were just, uh, just allowing me to, uh, take the time that it took, and I know it wasn't always, it wasn't always a great thing. I mean, it was, it was tough at times, especially this last go-around. My wife had no concept, uh, I, I had no concept I was going to run until two or three days prior to the last day you could put a petition, and my fellow board members, uh, pretty much, uh, said, "We'd go out and get petitions, will you run?" And I said, "If you guys are going to go do that, I guess I will." And then telling my wife on a Sunday night at six o'clock at night, "Can you get in the car, honey? Why are we going, where are we going? We're going to pick up petitions." "I thought you weren't running." I thought I wasn't running either. But, but some people have asked me, and I guess I am. So here I am, and here I go. So with, um, you know, a little bit of bittersweetness, uh, I've, I've enjoyed my time. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve our community, our school district. I, I have no regrets about having done it, um, and, uh, I look forward to bigger and better things as this district's accomplished, um, in the years to come. So thank you very much from the bottom of my heart.
And, and thank you very much for all coming. That's, that's nice word. There was no, no payment involved in any of that.
We're not done yet. We still have a consent agenda, so we can go through every item we can. All right. Any changes to the consent agenda? All right, with that, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, number 14, the consent agenda items that we went through in the committee of the whole. Can I have a...
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Quagliano. Can I go, hold on?
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
No. I just have to be contrary to him.
Really?
Really, yes.
Wait, so am I putting you down as a, in the yes column or the no column? Put me in the... Okay.
He got a look.
I'm a yes as well.
All right, uh, we move to, uh, number 15, action item, um, 15.1 HR Personnel Report. Dr. Zare, anything to add? Dr. Zare? All right, any comments from the board? All right, so we'll make a motion to approve 15.1 HR Personnel Report.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Craddy. Can I roll call them?
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
All right, with that, it passes seven to zero. Number 15, two supplemental purchase orders handed out table. Mr. Altmeyer, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
All right, any comments from the board? I'll make a motion to approve, uh, 15.2 supplemental purchase orders handed out. Mr. Zare, hold on a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Quagliano. Hold on.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
All right, with that, 15.2 passes seven to zero, and we can do it all again, because we have a second, uh, public comment. I think there's like 10 now. There is one.
And I just want to make sure I say I'm not being paid for this, but I do want to ask administration, board members, coming or whenever the decision, if finances get tight, please do not cut what these two ladies are doing over here with the AHT devices, because in my world, I got a surprise email from Carly saying, "Hey, when Ryan Age is out, he's not going to be able to take his district iPad with him." And she said, "But you have options." And it was just for me, an opportunity to really have a chance to take one thing off my load of, "What are we going to do when he transitions out?", to know that I'm going to have an iPad with Touch Chat on it. And yes, Mr. Troy, we do have to use that at home a little bit with him, but he's at least one that just uses it for support, he doesn't have to use it to speak. But please, when the numbers get tight, please let, make sure that these ladies and other students that are coming behind Ryan have these devices, and as they change, go with the flow to make sure you're helping them out. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Any other comments?
Actually, I just want to chime in one thing. Tony, um, also, I got a note from another superintendent, who just wanted to quickly wish you well, and that was Dr. Hawk.
Right?
Yeah.
Appreciate that. All right, uh, so that will move to 17. Uh, we make a, uh, motion to adjourn the meeting at 9:01 PM on Thursday, April 17.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All goes. All right, the meeting is ended.